The Monday, May fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-three regular meeting of the Gardner City Council will come to order. The clerk will please call the roll.
Counsel Boone?
Present.
Counsel Craig Cormier?
Present.
Counsel Ronna Cormier?
Present.
Counsel Don Lawitz?
Present.
Counsel Hardern?
Present.
Counsel Heath?
Present.
Counsel Matt?
Present.
Counsel Tison?
Present.
Counsel Tyros? Counsel Walsh?
Present.
And President Kuzinskas?
Present. Please rise to the side of the opening prayer and say the pledge of allegiance.
Oh my God, we pray that you bring us together this evening and inspire us toward the peace and sound decisions and in our support for the attainment of good city government. We pray that you bless and protect all the people of our city and to some guidance and inspirations that have been delivered in community and harmony. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Open reading recordings. Any person may make a video or audio recording of an open session of a meeting or may transmit the meeting through any medium subject to reasonable requirements of the chair as to the number, placement, and operation of equipment used so as not to interfere with the conduct of the meeting. Any person intending to make such recordings shall notify the chair forthwith. All documents and exhibits used or referenced at the meeting must be submitted in duplicate to the chair as they become part of the meeting minutes pursuant to general law, chapter thirty A, subsection twenty. Is anyone here recording tonight's meeting? Okay. We will begin with the reading and approval of the minutes of the March twenty twenty-three regular meeting. Counsel Ron Cormier?
Madam President, make a motion if we waive the reading of those minutes and accept them as presented.
Second the motion.
Motion made by Counsel Ron Cormier, seconded by Counsel Walsh, to waive the reading of the minutes and accept them as presented. Is there discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Motion passes. There are no public hearings. Communications from the mayor. Communications, item one zero nine nine five, a notification from the mayor regarding city electrical aggregation rates. Counsel Ron Cormier?
The mayor informed us at the finance committee meeting this would be coming. The last time we renewed the contract, it was for one year with the hopes that the rates would go down. This time they have. They've gone down significantly, as it's pointed out in your letter. And it's a three-year contract. And we hope that will save the combined residents of Gardner that participate in this a fair amount of money. And with that, I make a motion and place the communication on file.
Second.
Motion made by Counsel Ron Cormier, seconded by Counsel Don Lawitz, to place the notification on file. Is there discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Motion passes. Item one zero nine nine six, a memorandum from Mayor Nicholson regarding the FY two thousand and twenty-four city budget. Counsel Walsh?
Inasmuch, Madam President, as this goes along with the next several items that are included is the proposal from the mayor for the fiscal year two thousand and twenty-three, twenty-four annual budget. I move that this item, together with items one zero nine nine seven through one one zero zero six, all of which are various items associated with the mayor's proposal, proposed budget for the next fiscal year, be referred to the council as a committee of the whole and to the respective standing committees of the council for study and report.
Second.
Motion made by Counsel Walsh, seconded by Counselor Cormier, to refer item one zero nine nine six, one zero nine nine seven, a measure authorizing FY two thousand and twenty-four revolving funds for the city pursuant to Massachusetts general laws, chapter forty-four, section fifty-three E and a half. Item one zero nine nine eight, in order to raise and appropriate the sum of twenty-seven million eight hundred and eighty thousand, seven hundred and seven dollars and ten cents for the various departments of the city for the expense budget for the fiscal year beginning July first, two thousand and twenty-three to June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-four. Item one zero nine nine nine, in order to raise and appropriate the sum of thirteen million four hundred ninety-nine thousand, six hundred and twenty-seven dollars and thirty-six cents for the various departments of the city for the salary and labor budget for the fiscal year beginning on July first, two thousand and twenty-three to June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-four. Item one one zero zero zero, in order appropriating the sum of thirty-one million three hundred nineteen thousand, forty-six dollars for the school department budget for the fiscal year beginning July first, two thousand and twenty-three to June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-four. Item one one zero zero one, in order appropriating the sum of one hundred and ninety-seven thousand, two hundred and twenty dollars and twenty-two cents from available funds, cable commission fees reserved to cable commission budget for the fiscal year beginning July first, two thousand and twenty-three to June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-four. Item one one zero zero two, in order appropriating the sum of ten million three hundred ninety-one thousand, four hundred and forty-four dollars from available enterprise funds, various receipts reserved to various enterprise accounts for the fiscal year beginning July first, two thousand and twenty-three to June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-four. Item one one zero zero three, in order appropriating the sum of four hundred thousand dollars from available funds, bonds, proceeds reserved to interest outside debt for the fiscal year beginning July first, two thousand and twenty-three to June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-four. Item one one zero zero four, in order authorizing a transfer of the sum of two hundred and twelve thousand, three hundred and forty-nine dollars and seventy-four cents from sewer retained earnings slash surplus to fund the FY two thousand and twenty-four revenue budget. Item one one zero zero five, in order authorizing the transfer of the sum of sixty-eight thousand, seven hundred and twelve dollars and eleven cents from solid waste retained earnings slash surplus to fund the FY two thousand and twenty-four revenue budget. And item one one zero zero six, in order authorizing the transfer of the sum of ninety-six thousand, seven hundred and twenty-five dollars from landfill retained earnings slash surplus to fund the FY two thousand and twenty-four revenue budget to the council as a committee of the whole and also to the city council subcommittees in their respective areas for further study and report. Is there discussion on the motion? Counsel Walsh?
I neglected to point out in my motion that the next item, which is one one zero zero seven, an ordinance to amend the code of compensation, code of the city of Gardner, chapter one seventy-one thereof entitled personnel or change of compensation schedule, exhibit E, non-union personnel, is associated with these budget items as well, I believe. So I moved it. I would be including, with the grace of the secondary, in my motion, that item as well to be referred.
And I'll include that.
Thank you, Counsel. So motion made by Counsel Walsh, seconded by Counsel Cormier, including the previous motion and just adding in ordinances, item one one zero zero seven, an ordinance to amend the code of the city of Gardner, chapter one seventy-one thereof entitled personnel to change the compensation schedule, exhibit E, non-union personnel, also be referred to the committee of the whole, as well as the respective subcommittees of the city council for further study and report. Is there discussion on the motion? The clerk will please call the roll. I'm sorry. This is not a roll call. The clerk, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Motion passes. Petitions, applications, communications, et cetera. Item one zero nine nine three, a petition by National Grid and Verizon New England Incorporated, Elm Street, to install one, remove one, and relocate one jointly owned pole on Elm Street beginning at a point approximately three hundred and sixty feet southeast of the center line of the intersection of Elm Street and Cross Street and continuing approximately five hundred feet in a south direction. P six dash eighty, replace and relocate plus or minus thirty feet west. Install anchor guy on west of pole. P seven dash ninety-nine is being removed. P ten dash ninety-nine is installing push brace on west side of P ten. Counsel Walsh?
Would the item be referred to the Public Service Committee for study and report?
Second.
Motion made by Counsel Walsh, seconded by Counsel Don Lawitz, to refer the items to the Public Service Committee for further study and report. Is there discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Motion passes. Petitions, applications, communications, et cetera, continued. Item one zero nine nine four, I am going to take out of order and we will consider it at the, after item zero, I'm sorry, after item one zero nine nine two on page five. It will be the last item that we consider today before new business. Moving on to item one one zero zero eight, a notification of Monte Tech budget plan. Counsel Matt?
I move that we place the Monte Tech budget plan on file.
Second.
Motion made by Counsel Matt, seconded by Counsel Heath, to place the notification on file. Is there discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Motion passes. Reports of standing committees. Finance committee, item one zero nine seven seven, in order appropriating ninety-nine thousand dollars from free cash to the personnel employee benefits account, workers' compensation audit. Counsel Ron Cormier?
Yes, this is the way the workman's comp figures are adjusted from year to year. It's all based on experience. This is the audit we have. The city auditor did tell us that he had them, he questioned the cost of the audit and by doing so, he saved us eighteen thousand dollars, even though it's still a significant amount. This is for two years, I might add. And this is how the workman's comp figures were adjusted so that we can determine what we owe. And with that, Finance Committee was favorable and I move the order.
Second.
Motion made by Counsel Ron Cormier, seconded by Counsel Don Lawitz, to adopt the order. Is there discussion on the motion? The clerk will please call the roll.
Counsel Boone?
Yes.
Counsel Craig Cormier?
Yes.
Counsel Ronna Cormier?
Yes.
Counsel Don Lawitz?
Yes.
Counsel Hardern?
Yes.
Counsel Heath?
Yes.
Counsel Matt?
Yes.
Counsel Tison?
Yes.
Counsel Walsh?
Yes.
And President Kuzinskas?
Yes. Ten yeas, the motion passes. Item one zero nine seven eight, in order appropriating seven hundred and one thousand, seven hundred dollars from free cash to the DPW snow and ice removal expense account. Counsel Ron Cormier?
A dubious distinction. We have arrived at a new record for the amount of money expended. We could pay it off over as much as three years, which would be a very foolish thing. I've been here a long enough time to remember when the council used to have to adjust it and we'd pay the following year and we'd start in the hole. Fortunately, the last few years, between free cash and appropriating a little bit more, we prevented that. It was an expensive winter for ice, ice in particular, with salt expenditures. So this is what the cost was. Finance Committee was in favor and I move the order.
Second.
Motion made by Counsel Ron Cormier, seconded by Counsel Don Lawitz, to adopt the order. Is there discussion on the motion? Counsel Walsh?
Since I remind people, it comes up since we've been using the salt in place of sand or a combination of salt and sand for a number of years now, that we save a substantial amount in the damage to the roads as well as to, for sweeping expense, to sweep up all the sand and salt that used to accumulate in the roads that doesn't occur, although the roads still need to be swept, that isn't because of sand that's been deposited on the roads during the course of the winter. So although the expense is high and higher than it's ever been, we do have, there is a benefit to use it, using it in this way, aside from the fact that it's more effective in melting the, in treating the roads. So thank you.
Thank you, Counsel. Further discussion? The clerk will please call the roll.
Counsel Boone?
Yes.
Counsel Craig Cormier?
Yes.
Counsel Ronna Cormier?
Yes.
Counsel Don Lawitz?
Yes.
Counsel Hardern?
Yes.
Counsel Heath?
Yes.
Counsel Matt?
Yes.
Counsel Tison?
Yes.
Counsel Walsh?
Yes.
And President Kuzinskas?
Yes. Ten yeas, the motion passes. Item one zero nine seven nine, in order appropriating ten thousand dollars from free cash to the Treasury Department Professional Services tax title foreclosure. Counsel Ron Cormier?
Yes, several weeks ago, we received a list of properties that have been sold recently by the city that were taken over by, for tax purposes. It's a very expensive process to go to the tax court. Apparently, it costs about eighty-five hundred dollars per property on average. We did appropriate thirty-five thousand initially and this should take care of us through the end of the year. Finance Committee was favorable and I move the order.
Second.
Motion made by Counsel Ron Cormier, seconded by Counsel Don Lawitz, to adopt the order. Is there discussion on the motion? The clerk will please call the roll.
Counsel Boone?
Yes.
Counsel Craig Cormier?
Yes.
Counsel Ronna Cormier?
Yes.
Counsel Don Lawitz?
Yes.
Counsel Hardern?
Yes.
Counsel Heath?
Yes.
Counsel Matt?
Yes.
Counsel Tison?
Yes.
Counsel Walsh?
Yes.
And President Kuzinskas?
Yes. Ten yeas, the motion passes. Item one zero nine eight zero, in order appropriating three thousand, three hundred and twelve dollars from free cash to law department outside council expense account. Counsel Ron Cormier?
We initially budgeted five thousand dollars for this. There are four cases that are under action. They're fire department appeals and there's zoning matters. These require outside counsel. Finance Committee was favorable and I move the order.
Second.
Motion made by Counsel Ron Cormier, seconded by Counsel Don Lawitz, to adopt the order. Is there discussion on the motion? The clerk will please call the roll.
Counsel Boone?
Yes.
Counsel Craig Cormier?
Yes.
Counsel Ronna Cormier?
Yes.
Counsel Don Lawitz?
Yes.
Counsel Hardern?
Yes.
Counsel Heath?
Yes.
Counsel Matt?
Yes.
Counsel Tison?
Yes.
Counsel Walsh?
Yes.
And President Kuzinskas?
Yes. Ten yeas, the motion passes. Item one zero nine eight one, in order appropriating five hundred dollars from free cash to law department deposition and discovery expense account. Counsel Ron Cormier?
Yes, Finance Committee discussed this. Again, this is budgeted initially at five hundred dollars. This is the difference that's needed to provide this. We should be okay for the balance of the year and the Finance Committee was favorable and I move the order.
Second.
Motion made by Counsel Ron Cormier, seconded by Counsel Don Lawitz, to adopt the order. Is there discussion on the motion? The clerk will please call the roll.
Counsel Boone?
Yes.
Counsel Craig Cormier?
Yes.
Counsel Ronna Cormier?
Yes.
Counsel Don Lawitz?
Yes.
Counsel Hardern?
Yes.
Counsel Heath?
Yes.
Counsel Matt?
Yes.
Counsel Tison?
Yes.
Counsel Walsh?
Yes.
And President Kuzinskas?
Yes. Ten yeas, the motion passes. Item one zero nine eight two, in order appropriating eight hundred and seventy-nine dollars from free cash to law department professional development and travel account. Counsel Ron Cormier?
Finance Committee, we discussed this. Initially, we had a budgeted amount of a thousand dollars with this amount, the total. It is for required training for the solicitors that they're required to go through for professional development. Finance Committee was favorable and I move the order.
Second.
Motion made by Counsel Ron Cormier, seconded by Counsel Don Lawitz, to adopt the order. Is there discussion on the motion? The clerk will please call the roll.
Counsel Boone?
Yes.
Counsel Craig Cormier?
Yes.
Counsel Ronna Cormier?
Yes.
Counsel Don Lawitz?
Yes.
Counsel Hardern?
Yes.
Counsel Heath?
Yes.
Counsel Matt?
Yes.
Counsel Tison?
Yes.
Counsel Walsh?
Yes.
And President Kuzinskas?
Yes. Ten yeas, the motion passes. Item one zero nine eight three, in order appropriating fifteen thousand dollars from free cash to personnel department medical exam expense account. Counsel Ron Cormier?
Finance Committee discussed this also. Our initial budget was twenty thousand. I was astonished to hear we had a hundred and sixty-six hires this year. We require at our cost that each be given a physical. Those cost a hundred and fifty dollars. For fire department and police department, they're also required to have, by civil service, a psychological assessment. And I believe that's around eight hundred dollars. And we had six police department employees and seven fire department employees. This is a significant amount, but I was quite surprised at the total number of employees hired during the course of the year. Finance Committee was favorable and I move the order.
Second.
Motion made by Counsel Ron Cormier, seconded by Counsel Don Lawitz, to adopt the order. Is there discussion on the motion? The clerk will please call the roll.
Counsel Boone?
Yes.
Counsel Craig Cormier?
Yes.
Counsel Ronna Cormier?
Yes.
Counsel Don Lawitz?
Yes.
Counsel Hardern?
Yes.
Counsel Heath?
Yes.
Counsel Matt?
Yes.
Counsel Tison?
Yes.
Counsel Walsh?
Yes.
And President Kuzinskas?
Yes.
Ten yeas?
Ten yeas, the motion passes. Item one zero nine eight four, in order appropriating forty-five thousand dollars from free cash to mayor's unclassified energy and utilities account, Waterford Street School and Prospect Street School. Counsel Don Lawitz?
Thank you, Madam President. This is due to cost overage related to increased utility costs for these properties. Thirty-six thousand was originally budgeted, but as we all know, those costs have gone up. The good news here is Prospect is now sold, so it's not owned by the city anymore. And the Waterford Street property is worth being done, or leased to, leased up to a number of entities. So these expenditures, hopefully in the future, will no longer be part of, at least the mayor's unclassified budget. And the Finance Committee was in favor and I move the order.
Second.
Motion made by Counsel Don Lawitz, seconded by Counsel Heath, to adopt the order. Is there discussion on the motion? The clerk will please call the roll.
Counsel Boone?
Yes.
Counsel Craig Cormier?
Yes.
Counsel Ronna Cormier?
Yes.
Counsel Don Lawitz?
Yes.
Counsel Heath?
Yes.
Counsel Hardern?
Yes.
Counsel Matt?
Yes.
Counsel Tison?
Yes.
Counsel Walsh?
Yes.
And President Kuzinskas?
Yes. Ten yeas, the motion passes. Item one zero nine eight five, in order appropriating twenty-five thousand dollars from free cash to mayor's unclassified S Graves versus city lawsuit account. Counsel Don Lawitz?
Thank you, Madam President. There's an existing deficit, this account for the lawsuit. Total expenditures so far are fifty-four thousand, eight hundred and seventy-eight dollars and twenty-two cents. This new appropriation will cover the remainder of the deficit. That's not the new total, that's the running total. Attorney General, as we've discussed in the past, is now taking a lead, so will not be burying these costs alone. Finance Committee was in favor and I move the order.
Second.
Motion made by Counsel Don Lawitz, seconded by Counsel Ron Cormier, to adopt the order. Is there discussion on the motion? Counsel Boone?
Thank you, Madam President. I'm wondering if the public knows what this lawsuit is about. It's trying to get to the bottom of why homeowners had to replace their tankless hot water heaters for the, when our city refuses to answer any questions. As a real estate investor, a homeowner, I too had to spend thousands of dollars to replace the coils. Finally, I had to switch to hot water heaters because suppliers wouldn't even sell to Gardner because of the toxic water. All the heating contractors knew it. Suppliers knew it. Everybody knew it, but it's been hidden. It reminds me of that movie with Tom Cruise and Jack Nicholson. You can't handle the truth. And it's really frustrating that we can't find the truth, that something has to come out. And on top of that, we have two full-time lawyers in Gardner and they refuse to handle this case. So here we go, another twenty-five thousand dollars of taxpayers' money is going to fight this lawsuit, which, in my opinion, has warrant. I'd like to know the truth. I'm not worried about the money I spent. I spent thousands. I just want to know, did we know about it and did we hide it from the people? So I'm sick and tired of spending money on an outside law firm when we have two full-time attorneys working for the city. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Counsel. Further discussion? Counsel Walsh?
I want to point out very briefly that the reason we have outside counsel in this is that the plaintiff in the case named the city solicitor as a defendant in the case. That's why. And as a result, a conflict of interest occurred that required the retention of outside counsel. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel. Further discussion? Counsel Matt?
And if these other counselors, please correct me if I'm wrong. I believe this is as a result of another lawsuit that is still pending in litigation and that is why information has not been released because it could affect the original lawsuit against the city. And that has not been resolved. So that is why information, and that was explained to us, it has not yet been released to the public. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Counsel. Further discussion? The clerk will please call the roll.
Counsel Boone?
No.
Counsel Craig Cormier?
Yes.
Counsel Ronna Cormier?
Yes.
Counsel Don Lawitz?
Yes.
Counsel Hardern?
Yes.
Counsel Heath?
Yes.
Counsel Matt?
Yes.
Counsel Tison?
Yes.
Counsel Walsh?
Yes.
And President Kuzinskas?
Yes. Nine yeas, the motion passes. Item one zero nine eight six, in order appropriating ten thousand dollars from free cash to city hall maintenance repairs and maintenance account. Counsel Don Lawitz?
Thank you, Madam President. This is for additional amount related to elevator repairs and costs. Original budget for the city hall maintenance was twenty-five thousand dollars. This additional ten thousand will cover us through the remainder of the fiscal year. Finance Committee was in favor and I move the order.
Second.
Motion made by Counsel Don Lawitz, seconded by Counsel Ron Cormier, to adopt the order. Is there a discussion on the motion? The clerk will please call the roll.
Counsel Boone?
Yes.
Counsel Craig Cormier?
Yes.
Counsel Ronna Cormier?
Yes.
Counsel Don Lawitz?
Yes.
Counsel Hardern?
Yes.
Counsel Heath?
Yes.
Counsel Matt?
Yes.
Counsel Tison?
Yes.
Counsel Walsh?
Yes.
And President Kuzinskas?
Yes. Ten yeas, the motion passes. Item one zero nine eight seven, in order appropriating twenty-five thousand dollars from free cash to DPW streetlights expense account. Counsel Don Lawitz?
Thank you, Madam President. This item is to pay, again, for increased electoral cost for the streetlights. There was a little more color to this given by the mayor that I didn't want to go into a bit of detail about. There is an issue with the building that was spotted by the city engineer, Rob Oliver. The city had switched over, as many of us know, to LED lights back in two thousand and nineteen. There was supposed to be a lower rate charge for these LED lights. On the bill, it actually is stating LED lights. But the city engineer noticed that the actual rate we're being charged is not the LED rate. So National Grid is now in the process of auditing all the light poles. So National Grid is now in the process of auditing all the light poles. Estimate by the mayor, we could have a credit up to $200,000 for the overcharges from that time. So credit to the city engineer for spotting that. In the meantime, we have been advised we do have to pay the bills ongoing until that's resolved. The finance committee was in favor and I move the order.
Second.
Motion made by Councillor General Lawitz, seconded by Councillor Ron Cormier to adopt the order. Is there a discussion on the motion? The clerk will please call the roll.
Councillor Boone?
Yes.
Councillor Craig Cormier?
Yes.
Councillor Ronald Cormier?
Yes.
Councillor General Lawitz?
Yes.
Councillor Harder?
Yes.
Councillor Heath?
Yes.
Councillor Mack?
Yes.
Councillor Tison?
Yes.
Councillor Walsh?
Yes.
And President Kaczynski?
Yes. Ten years, the motion passes. Item 10988, in order appropriating $32,000 from free cash to Greenwood Pool pool filtration system expense account. Councillor General Lawitz?
Thank you. As noted, price increases were dramatic from the time the filtration system was ordered in April 2021 and when it was actually installed last October in 2022. This order will cover the remainder of the cost for the installation of this item. The shack that's down there, it's the size of that, inside that entire shack. Finance committee was in favor and I move the order.
Second.
Motion made by Councillor General Lawitz, seconded by Councillor Ron Cormier to adopt the order. Is there a discussion on the motion? Councillor Boone?
Thank you, Madam President. To the finance committee, couldn't... Maybe I don't understand, but wouldn't the supplier honor their quote? And what took place to cause this extra $32,000?
My understanding was, sorry...
Councillor General Lawitz?
My understanding for the explanation, there was a cost for additional... The conduits, decreased prices for that were part of this cost as well. So it wasn't just the installation. The installation, you need these additional parts and the part prices had gone up. And that was, our understanding was part was not part of the contract, it was the price at the time of installation.
Thank you, Councillor. Councillor Boone?
Thank you, Madam President, and thank you, Councillor. Obviously, I'm going to vote for it because the pool is essential to our community, but it just seems to me something's wrong here. Anyways, thank you.
Thank you, Councillor, further discussion? The clerk will please call the roll.
Councillor Boone?
Yes.
Councillor Craig Cormier?
Yes.
Councillor Ronald Cormier?
Yes.
Councillor General Lawitz?
Yes.
Councillor Harder?
Yes.
Councillor Heath?
Yes.
Councillor Mack?
Yes.
Councillor Tison?
Yes.
Councillor Walsh?
Yes.
And President Kaczynski?
Yes. Ten years, the motion passes. Item 10989, in order appropriating $1,091 from free cash to zoning board of appeals communications account. Councillor General Lawitz?
Thank you, Madam President. This item is to cover additional costs for the notice requirements incurred by the zoning board of appeals. Original budget was for $3,000. The mayor did note that they are looking into passing these costs on to the project owner going forward. They're just looking into whether logistics of doing this and whether or not it's possible. However, the bills, the costs are there this year. Finance committee was in favor and I move the order.
Second.
Motion made by Councillor General Lawitz, seconded by Councillor Ron Cormier to adopt the order. Is there a discussion on the motion? The clerk will please call the roll.
Councillor Boone?
Yes.
Councillor Craig Cormier?
Yes.
Councillor Ronald Cormier?
Yes.
Councillor General Lawitz?
Yes.
Councillor Harder?
Yes.
Councillor Heath?
Yes.
Councillor Mack?
Yes.
Councillor Tison?
Yes.
Councillor Walsh?
Yes.
And President Kaczynski?
Yes. Ten years, the motion passes. Item 10990, in order appropriating $14,925 from free cash to the IT department City Hall copy machine account. Councillor General Lawitz?
Thank you, Madam President. Current copier is about 10 years old. Stated in our packet, is almost beyond its useful life. It's used by nearly all the departments in the building. Repairs are needed more often than point, so it's time to get a new machine. We did inquire whether or not the old machine had any value. They're going to check into that, but, or maybe possibly be able to reuse it in some way. Finance committee was in favor of this and I move the order.
Second.
Motion made by Councillor General Lawitz, seconded by Councillor Cormier to adopt the order. Is there a discussion on the motion? Councillor Tisoni?
Yes, through the chair, Madam President. Was, can we ask the finance committee whether or not leasing a copier was an option?
That was not brought up. This is, sorry. This was the recommendation of the IT department was the purchase, but leasing was not brought up, no.
Okay.
Councillor Heath, did you ever hand up?
Yes. I just want to know, is that average price 15 grand for a copy machine? That's about...
Councillor General Lawitz?
It can depend on how big a machine you can get. You can get machines that are $100,000 depending on how much copying and printing you're doing. So my guess is, yes, this was picked for the appropriate amount of usage that was going to be done here at City Hall.
All right, does that ask, sorry?
Thank you, Councillor. Councillor Mack?
Along the same lines as Councillor Tisoni, I think they actually should look to a lease deal. Because if I'm not mistaken, I believe that's what the school department does. I think it's through Connecticut Business Systems and the, with a lot of the printers. And the copiers are then switched out much more frequently to upgraded machines. And so you're not having one for, you know, a long period of use and it becomes antiquated where there are new machines and that can do different things and get it replaced, sometimes annually, sometimes every two years. So I agree, I think it's something that really they should look into. Thank you.
Further discussion? Councillor General Lawitz?
As soon as we do have time, I'd be happy to refer this back to the finance committee, as said in my previous motion.
Second.
Motion made by Councillor General Lawitz, seconded by Councillor Heath to refer the item back to the finance committee for further sitting report. Is there a discussion on the motion? Councillor Mack?
I appreciate the, being referred and with the leasing, because of the amount of having one copier, they might be able to afford to have one on each floor, have a couple of copiers in the building. So I think that might be very advantageous to City Hall. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor, further discussion? All those in favor say aye? All those opposed say no? The motion passes. Safety Committee, item 10861, an ordinance to amend the code of the City of Gardner, Chapter 600, entitled Vehicles and Traffic, Section 42, entitled One Way Street. Councillor Craig Cormier?
Thank you, Madam President. We are now 35 days into the 60-day trial period that the chief police had put in place on Reagan Street. The feedback has been generally positive in regards to this item. Before we referred this to be temporary, the safety committee had met on this. We'd had a public hearing and we had voted unanimously to recommend approval of this ordinance. Now that we've got 35 days under the city's belt and the, there seems to be no major issues with this, in order to get this done before the 60 days is up, I am going to move to approve this, send this ordinance to first printing tonight.
Second.
Motion made by Councillor Craig Cormier, seconded by Councillor Boone to send the item to first printing. Is there a discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye? All those opposed say no? The motion passes. Item 10971, an ordinance to amend the code of the City of Gardner, Chapter 306, thereof entitled alcoholic beverages, to add a new section five thereof entitled marijuana retail establishments, to increase the quota allowed and change the method for amending the quota allowed by the code of the City of Gardner. Councillor Craig Cormier?
Yes, if, we have not had a chance to meet on this, so if it is, there's no objection, we'd like to ask for more time.
If there is no objection, the committee will be granted more time? The committee will be granted more time. Item 10991, an application by Gardner Temples Incorporated for a bowling alley license located at 560 West Broadway. Councillor Craig Cormier?
Again, we have not met on this item as well, so we would ask for more time.
If there is no objection, the committee will be granted more time? The committee will be granted more time? Unfinished business that matters for reconsideration. Item 10972, an ordinance to amend the code of the City of Gardner, Chapter 675 thereof entitled zoning, to add sports betting to the zoning table of uses. Councillor Harder?
Yes, Madam President. On items number 10972, number 10973, and number 10974, I'd like to make a motion to remove these three items from the calendar and authorize the council president to work with the law department to draft a self-report to the attorney general's office.
Second.
Motion made by Councillor Harder, seconded by Councillor Tisoni to remove items 10972, 10973, an ordinance to amend the code of the City of Gardner, Chapter 675 thereof entitled zoning, to amend Section 1070 thereof entitled marijuana establishments, to increase the quota allowed by the code of the City of Gardner. Item 10974, an ordinance to amend the code of the City of Gardner, Chapter 675 thereof entitled zoning, to change the classification of certain parcels of land along Route 140. To remove those items from the council calendar and authorize the council president to work with the law department to draft a self-report to the attorney general's office. Is there discussion on the motion? Councillor Boone?
Madam President, so I think in previous council meetings, we thought, and maybe I'm wrong, that, you know, the sports betting and the marijuana extension was kind of favored. So I'm kind of curious why we're taking all of these off the table and not moving those forward. I understand it's contentious with the zoning on 140, so I just would like an explanation on why we're removing all of them.
Thank you, Councillor. Councillor Walsh?
I don't want to take the place of mover, the maker of the motion, but as I read the opinion from the law department, each of these items was, had included in it a letter in support of the, each of them. And that, that letter of support that was communicated to all of the council outside of a public, publicly noticed meeting constituted a violation of the open meeting law. And the recommendation of the law department is that these be withdrawn and that the council self-report the violation to the attorney general's office. And that's the reason for all of them, because all of the, all three of them, each of them contained a letter of support signed by five members of the council, which was communicated to the entire council outside of a publicly noticed meeting. For those reasons, and I, as I understand the making of motion's reasoning and the content of the motion is the reason why all three need to be withdrawn. Thank you.
Further discussion? Thank you, Councillor. Councillor Mack?
Just for clarity, just because these are being withdrawn this evening at the recommendation of the city solicitor does not mean that they will not be, could, would not be proposed again to the council by a individual counselor or in another means. So these, none of these three, I don't want to give anybody the false sense that they're just going away tonight. They're being taken off our calendar now, but they will most likely reappear. We just don't know when. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor, further discussion? The clerk will, I'm sorry. All those in favor say aye? All those opposed say no? Motion passes. Item 10992, a notification regarding new business. Councillor General Lawitz?
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to make a motion to place this notification on file, as well as add a new item to the order of business after new business called Counselor Comments and Remarks.
Second.
Motion made by Councillor General Lawitz, seconded by Councillor Tisoni to place the notification on file and add a new item to the council agenda called Counselor Remarks. Is there a discussion, Councillor, on the motion? Councillor General Lawitz?
Thank you, Madam President. As stated in the opinion from the law department, we are allowed to have new business. If the chair knows within 48 hours, if we inform her that we want something on the agenda, it's got to be there. I believe it still should be there in case things come up that need to be brought up short notice. However, the way we're utilizing it for Counselor Comments is not appropriate. It needs to be used for new business and that is all. The, to avoid any other problems, we should make sure, at least in my opinion, during Counselor Comments and Remarks, make sure we're not talking about old business, make sure we're not bringing up new business, because that's the whole point of new business. Or the old business we're talking about, talking about it while that's in front of us. So I think this would be a good idea to bifurcate the two, leave them both on there. And if you do know something you want to bring up, just make sure you submit it to the, submit it to the clerk and it can get on the, on the agenda. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor, further discussion? Councillor Walsh?
I support the motion. The only thing I'd point out, that there's two parts to the motion. One is to place the communication on file, which requires a majority vote and an amendment to the council rules that contain the agenda, which, an amendment by the council rules requires a two-thirds of them. So I just point that out. I don't know if, perhaps we can separate the question?
Let's, I'll separate the question. I'll move to first notification, to place notification on file.
Motion made by Councillor General Lawitz, seconded by Councillor Tisoni to place the notification on file. All those in favor say aye? All those opposed say no? Motion passes. Councillor General Lawitz?
I'll make a motion to add a new order of business after new business called Counselor Comments and Remarks.
Second.
Motion made by Councillor General Lawitz, seconded by Councillor Tisoni to add a new item to the council calendar after new business called Counselor Remarks. Is there a discussion on the motion?
Just, if I may?
Councillor Walsh?
I think the easy rule of thumb on this would be that a new business item would require, would be one that would be considered for a vote. And a comment is just a comment or a remark, not involving a vote that we took, that we're, that we anticipate taking, or that is under our consideration at the present time for a vote. And rather than just commentary or comments that is, most commonly the content of what we have previously known as new business.
Thank you, Councillor, further discussion? Another vote, call vote on this motion. The clerk will please call the vote.
Councillor Boone?
Yes.
Councillor Craig Cormier?
Yes.
Councillor Ronald Cormier?
Yes.
Councillor General Lawitz?
Yes.
Councillor Harder?
Yes.
Councillor Boone?
Yes.
Councillor Mack?
Yes.
Councillor Tison?
Yes.
Councillor Walsh?
Yes.
And President Kaczynski?
Yes. Ten years, the motion passes. We will now take up item number 10994, which is on page three of our agenda. I mean, I moved to the end out of order. Item 10994, an open meeting law complaint filed by Paul DeMayo regarding open meeting law compliance. Councillor Walsh?
Oh, just to get it started, we have a proposed response from the law department to this particular complaint, although it is a, the proposal is on a form that appears to be, or the response appears to be on a form that was intended for a different purpose. I think the recommendation is that it be put on, the response be put on council, a council letterhead. And so with that in mind, I move that we approve the response provided by the law department to the open meeting law complaint by Mr. DeMayo.
Second.
Motion made by Counselor Walsh, seconded by Councillor General Lawitz to approve the proposed response to be submitted by the council to Paul DeMayo. Is there a discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye? All those opposed say no? Motion passes. There is no new business. I will entertain a motion to adjourn after the closing prayer.
So move.
Motion made by Counselor Tisoni, seconded by Councillor Mack to adjourn after the closing prayer. All those in favor say aye? All those opposed say no? Motion passes. Almighty Father, who is with us all, as we adjourn, thanking the opportunity of your great deliberation and action witnesses during the course of this meeting. Bless our Lord, all who are gathered here, and the people whose representatives we are, and thou art in our common welfare, until our next meeting. Amen.